Thank you for making it to our early panel. My name is Natalie Christmas. I'm one of the members of the Young Lawyers Chapter here in Florida. Again, thank you for making it to the early panel, the panel traditionally given to the young lawyers, which is unabashed hazing on behalf of the Florida Federalist Society. I'd like to introduce our moderator for this first panel today. Justice Jamie Grosshands is a proud University of Mississippi graduate and a member of the Florida Supreme Court, and she told me to say nothing else except that she loves college football. So I'll hand it off to Justice Grosshands.
Thank you, Natalie. Good morning. It's great to see you all, the brave souls who made it out at 8:15. This is actually my first 8:15 panel that I've ever attended, so I appreciate you being here. I'm going to give very brief, very brief introductions because we're going to work into our first question today on public interest litigation and a career path that looks at all the ins and outs of that. They're going to tell you a little bit about themselves and their life stories and what brought them to this place. So we have Christopher Mills, we have Jimmy Percival, we have Justin Pearson, and we have Christine Pratt. And we are going to start today with Christopher to tell us a little bit about your career path, what brought you to this position, and why did you choose this particular area of the law?
Thanks. Well, thanks. Thanks for having me. It's always a treat to be here with so many good people at the Florida Fed Soc Conference. So I wouldn't have guessed that I would be doing solo practice focused on public interest law. When I was in law school, I might have dreamed that I was doing that, but I wouldn't have thought it would actually work. After I went to law school, I clerked and then worked at a big law firm in DC for five years, and then clerked again, went to a regional law firm, and that did not work out. And so I did a fellowship at the Beckett Fund, which does a lot of great work in religious liberty, and then got a call asking me to represent South Carolina as outside counsel defending its fetal heartbeat law. And I thought, well, this gives me a chance to do something I always wanted to try, which was running my own practice focused on things that I really cared about. It gave me one client who wasn't going to, you know, not pay my bills, hopefully. Of course, I knew nothing about the business side of this, but I just decided to go for it. And that was almost two years ago now. And since then, I've, I just tell people that I do the work that big firms won't do, which is an ever-expanding universe of cases. And that's so for two reasons. The first is obvious. Firms won't touch certain issues or causes, at least on one side. And that problem, of course, continues to get worse. So a lot of my work is focused on things like abortion, gender transitioning, critical race theory, affirmative action, and religious liberty. The second problem is less obvious, but pretty relevant to my practice, is that big firms charge an obscene amount of money to support their business models. So there's a real need for high-quality work, briefing, legal research from clients that just aren't going to pay a first-year associate $600 an hour to do something that then needs to be rewritten by a $900-an-hour partner, and so on up the chain. So that's where I come in, hopefully, by saying, hey, I can do something that doesn't involve that rigmarole in the area that people really care about. And so that's why I chose it. I find it really fulfilling to do something like that where I feel like I have a purpose in what I'm doing day-to-day. And it's just been a lot of fun. I see a couple of my former interns in the audience, and so it's also been great to work with interns, mostly from the Blackstone Program, who help and sort of share my passion for the causes that we work on.
Thank you. Christine, you are with the First Liberty Institute, which last night everyone was all abuzz about because you guys have had a lot of action at your organization lately. So tell us a little bit about your path.
So I actually am, I'm coming back from being a stay-at-home mom for seven years. So I do not have a traditional career path story. I do not have a five-year plan that I can articulate to you and sound very put together and very smart. The way that this whole path has worked out has been just very, I would describe it as miraculous, and I'm very happy with that. So I got married when I was in law school. I have always loved studying the law, and I was a client of Alliance Defending Freedom when I was a college student. And not knowing what I should do after I graduated with an economics degree at the University of Florida, said, well, I guess I'll try law school because the lawyer who represented me really touched my life, and it was really great. He helped me a lot. And so I went to law school, and I got married. And being a conservative female fulfilled my dream at the time of, well, I'm going to have a family, and I'm going to support my husband, who is also in law school at the University of Florida. And that was great for seven years. We have three children. And the best way I can describe it is just intuitively. I felt called, that I was supposed to, out of the blue, use my law degree. I did not do the smart thing during those seven years of sort of keeping active, you know, maybe writing a little here and there, keeping in touch. I did none of those things. I didn't go to events because I was, I was a mom, and I loved being a mom. So the call to use my law degree sounded absurd, frankly. I had to pray about it a lot. My pastor, a super amazing, sweet man, was like, it is so sad that people don't value mothers. You know, that was sort of his response when I said I wanted to work. But I said, I took a chance on what I felt was God, and I said, okay, no one's going to hire me, but I'll do it. I'll write a resume. I'll put something together. It was crap. And I sent it out, in my opinion. That's how I felt about it, because I had very little legal experience. And I got this clerkship, I clerked remotely temporarily for a federal magistrate judge whose term clerk was out on maternity leave. And my amazing, flexible husband was willing to take a chance on this. And the goal was, he said, okay, two of our children had to be put into daycare. So he said, if you can find a job that will cover the costs of daycare, I'm on board, which is pretty, that's pretty reasonable. So I said, okay, we'll try it. And that clerkship just covered the costs of daycare with the salary that I was making for those three months. And so then I had three months to find something else if I was going to continue this, which I was totally open. Maybe this was all. Maybe this was, maybe that was the point. I would clerk for three months, and then I would go back home. Instead, I was hired to work in the Office of General Counsel at the U.S. Department of Education. And so I went from being a stay-at-home mom to, five months later, you know, sitting in meetings, working under Secretary Betsy DeVos, and helping to form education policy on areas that I had a lot of personal experience and investment in. And so from there, I worked for the Department of Health and Human Services in the Office for Civil Rights, and I became very, very, very clued in at HHS, especially, particularly working in civil rights, on what was going on in our country and what, as a lawyer, I could do to address some of these issues. We received incredible complaints through our silver, you know, through the portal online. And I just became aware of, like, incredible injustices around the country and things like that. So after service in the federal government, I went to First Liberty because, like, they are there on the front lines, and I wanted to be there on the front lines. I still felt called to be there on the front lines. And so it's just been a wonderful experience for our entire family. I talk a lot with my kids about the work that I do, and the highlight, for sure, are the people that we represent. We really get to identify, you know, when someone comes to us for help, we have the ability, because everything that we do is pro bono. We don't have to turn anyone away because they can't pay our legal fees. We can take those cases where we're like, this, this is justified. You know, this person needs help regardless of where they come from or what they have to offer, so to speak. And so my kids are totally clued up on, like, certain issues that are, you know, they're aware of, like, regulatory actions and what the federal government is doing, and, you know, there's overreach, and they don't respect the bounds of, you know, the separations of power. And my 10-year-old is not, I'm not sure she really knows what she's talking about, but she kind of says the words. And so I, you know, I just sort of ended up here. It's just been a winding path, and for sure, it's a calling. I feel that way. And I'm trying to think what else. It's, you know, it's, it's been really fun. If you, if you can stay flexible and enjoy the winding of it, I highly recommend public interest law. It's very rewarding and, at times, extremely challenging, but that's what makes it fun.
All right, Jimmy, you have a very unique position. You're working with legal policy over the Attorney General's Office. Tell us how you got there, and what does that mean? What do you do every day?
So it's funny, you know, we're here to talk about public interest, and, you know, one of the things they told us is it was especially targeted to a young, young audience, people kind of finishing law school or starting out. And it's funny because the last two people told you that they didn't start out thinking they wanted to be in public interest, and that's, that's my story too. So definitely don't feel like you have to take that path right away. In fact, you know, I started out on the typical path of clerking, working in big law. And, you know, one thing you sometimes hear from people in public interest is that they're in public interest because big law is terrible. And I'm not going to tell you that. I thought it was a great experience. I learned a ton. I paid off, you know, $200,000 in student loan debt. So I'm not going to knock it, but I did get to a point, you know, four or five years in where I was just ready for something different. I didn't want to do that for the rest of my life. And I think, kind of like everybody else, I didn't really know what I wanted to do. And then, as luck would have it, I was living in DC, and we had a change in administration. And my phone just rang one day, basically because of this network. So I went to work in the Department of Justice. Had a lot of fun doing that. You know, I had been doing a lot of, like, antitrust and really random big-law-y things. And next thing I know, I'm, you know, working on all these administrative challenges and defending the federal government, trying to keep Brett Shumate out of trouble. And so I, you know, and I was doing that and just enjoying it, not really sure what I wanted to do next. And then, you know, next thing I know, my boss leaves to work as the General Counsel of Walmart. This guy named Jesse Pinucci takes over. And my wife was a Floridian, and I wasn't even a Floridian, but all of a sudden, Republicans in this state won an election that maybe it looked like they weren't going to win, and it just seemed like a good time to move to Florida. So I joined the AG's office, and I worked in Solicitor General's Office for a while, and then two years ago, I took on this new job. A lot of what I do is litigation against the federal government. I hesitate to share this story because it's not true, what my daughter said, but it was so adorable. They had her do this Father's Day thing at school. She was five years old, and they were asking them these questions about their dad, and they fill it out, and they laminate, and they give it to you. And hanging in my office, they asked my daughter, what does daddy do for a job? And she said, getting rid of Joe Biden. Which is not true, but I often do litigate against the federal government, and had to disabuse my daughter a little bit of what I do on a day-to-day basis.
That's great. I'm glad it wasn't taken as like an assassination warning or anything like that.
I was a little worried I was going to get a call from the school.
The school is going to call. All right, Justin, tell us a little bit about your career path and what you're focused on now.
Well, like everyone else on this panel, apparently, I went to law school not planning to do public interest law. Really, the main reason I went to law school was because my mom is a small business owner in South Florida. And when I was in college, I looked around and realized that there was a giant army of lawyers representing big businesses, and another giant army representing the government, but there didn't seem to be that many lawyers representing small business owners like my mom. There were a few, but not nearly enough. And I also really liked the idea of having my own business. And so I went to law school with the plan of starting my own business in the form of a law practice dedicating to representing small business owners. And that's what I did. I was smart enough not to hang up a shingle right out of law school. So I spent three and a half years doing commercial litigation, getting a bunch of trial experience. But in my fourth year, I started my own practice. And my mom was my first client. Eventually, I had people who hired me who weren't related to me.
Always a good step.
It was, yeah. It worked out. I mean, I had that practice for seven years, and I would still have it today. I'm proud to say it was a successful practice, but if not for IJ, I'd still have it. But there was one source of continuing frustration, which is that I wasn't able to fix anything. Because on the budgets that my small-business-owner clients had, all I could really perform was what I started referring to as pain management. And I was getting the same calls over and over again from different clients and just kind of helping them to deal with it as best I could on their limited budgets. And I wasn't really fixing anything, and I felt like I wasn't really doing the thing that I had gone to law school to do. And so to make myself feel better, I started doing some pro bono work on the side, trying to get towns in Florida to get rid of their food truck bans. And while I was doing that pro bono work, this is about a dozen years ago, IJ opened up its Miami office. And so I call up IJ, and I said, hey, welcome to Florida. We need your help. Let me tell you about this food truck stuff I'm doing. If you want it, it's yours. I know it's really your thing. I'll go back to running my practice. And it led to this relationship where, a year later, I was closing down my practice and taking over IJ's Miami office. And it's been everything, you know, I could have hoped it could be. It's been amazing. I literally get paid a salary now to do the things I used to do for fun as pro bono work, which I just think is a terrific deal.
So do we have you to thank for food trucks? I mean, is that what you just told us?
To be fair, I mean, I'm part of a team.
Okay.
But I am the director of IJ's National Street Vending Initiative, so on some level, I get the credit for everyone at IJ who works on food truck work.
All right. I love that. Now, Justin, when we were kind of talking about this, you said a lot of times, people don't realize the mental well-being and the fulfillment that comes out of this type of law that you may not have in some of the others. And can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. You know, I've been practicing law for over two decades now, and so I've seen what's happened to my law school buddies and just other lawyers. And then I contrast that to what I see at IJ and other public interest law firms, and it's such a stark contrast. And I think too often, the problems with the legal profession are misdiagnosed, right? We often hear that it's because lawyers are working too many hours. And I don't think that's really what it is, because I work really long hours at IJ. My wife gets mad at me. She says, why are you still at the office at 9:00 PM? You're a public interest lawyer. You don't get paid anymore. But it's because I love what I do. And I look around at my colleagues, and they all love what they do. And so I, you know, any decent lawyer is going to spend a huge amount of their time and energy being a good lawyer. And I think the problem is when you put your heart and soul into something on behalf of clients you don't like, fighting about issues you wouldn't otherwise care about. I think that's what's soul-destroying. That's what leads you down this path of, you know, mental health issues and depression and all the other problems that the legal community faces. Honestly, we don't have those issues at IJ, right? If you spend that same amount of time representing people you love on issues that you are truly passionate about, it's just a whole different ballgame.
All right, Jimmy, a lot of lawyers don't even realize, young lawyers, law students don't realize the opportunities that are out there in this field. I mean, the four of you practice completely different types of law right now, but all in this field. And a lot of, a lot of schools are focused on two things, you know, big law firms and federal clerkships. And so can you kind of address that, especially for the law students that might be watching this in the future? Talk a little bit about that and what opportunities are out there, and why do we not talk about it more?
I don't know the answer to that last question, but we should talk about it more. You know, I think it's, we call it public interest litigation, but when you think about what is public interest litigation, it's really either litigating against the federal or against the federal or state government or local government, or litigating for them. So it's, somebody in the government is usually on one side of the V. So obviously, a public defender is in public interest, a prosecutor's in public interest. You know, these guys will probably sue me at some point. But we're all in public interest. So there's obviously a lot of different things there. But I mean, from our office's perspective, I mean, we have statewide prosecutors who do that kind of work. We have, you know, the Solicitor General's Office and our office, who does a lot of work defending state laws and state administrative actions and, you know, sometimes suing the federal government. But then we have antitrust enforcement, consumer protection. I mean, there's just so many different things you can do. So I guess what I would say is, I think it's hard to be interested in a public interest track in the abstract because that's too big of an umbrella. So, you know, if that's something you're interested in, I would try to figure out what exactly you're interested in, although it's also fine to just take a job out of law school and figure it out later, because I think it sounds like all four of us did that.
Christine, do you have any other thoughts about that? You know, you, you took a very different path. Did they talk about this in law school?
No, never. And I think a lot of it comes down to, especially if, you know, if you're a good kid from a family, you want to make your parents proud, you think that, you know, going to big law is the way to do that, or even your colleagues or your, you know, the students you're with in, in school, you want to make your professors proud. But it really comes down to pursuing, you know, getting in touch with your instincts and kind of listening to that call. And you'll find success when you, when you follow that path, because you'll be really good at what you do. You'll find where you belong, instead of trying to force yourself to fit the mold of what you think a lawyer is supposed to look like or how that person is supposed to be or how success is defined. But you'll find success a lot better, sort of learning to listen to the inner, your inner voice, or even the voice of God, instead of listening to all of those, the cacophony of voices around you in this field, which speak very, very loudly that no one will like you if you're not fancy and you're not impressive and you're not the smartest guy in the room. But ultimately, I have found that seeking power has this inverse effect of depriving you of power. But if you go low and you don't seek power, you'll find authority there to do something that you were made to do, and that itself will be, it'll have power to it. It'll be powerful.
Those are very wise words at 8:40 on a Saturday morning. Now, let's say, Christopher, if someone's thinking, you know, I'd really like to go down this path, I'd like to look into this, what types of things do you think are important in the background? And would you have done anything different in your path?
I guess it sort of depends on what, what stage of your career you're at. If you're in law school, I would just encourage you to read, read a lot and look at other opportunities other than, you know, what your career service office is going to say about clerkships and big law firms, because there's a lot more out there, you know, as you can see just from this panel, in terms of places doing exciting things. And lots of folks, even modeled by the organizations up here, you know, want younger lawyers too. So even if you're, even if you're just getting out of law school, I don't think you have, you feel like you have to go pay your dues and do something miserable for a few years and then eventually find your calling. So that'd be one thing I would think about, you know, if you're interested in ever having your own practice, you probably want to do what I did not do and pay some attention to how to run the law firm. I obviously had no idea how to do that. Thankfully, with the wealth of online services these days, it's, I think, a lot easier than it used to be. So those would be a couple of things I would do. But if you're interested in the area of law, I would just read a lot about it. I'd read the decisions. I'd read about the organizations who are working in that particular slice of public interest, and hopefully that will open doors.
Our other panelists, do you have any background you think is particularly important? And would you do anything different in your background?
So I guess I'll go first. I mean, I can honestly say, like, I have my dream job. I will literally never leave IJ until the day I retire from the practice of law. So I'm hesitant to say I would do something differently, because then I might not have ended up with my dream job, even if I didn't know it was my dream job while I was in law school. But the one thing that I think does come up that sometimes I have a little regret over is that most of my colleagues did judicial clerkships. Some of them clerked at the US Supreme Court, others, I mean, they've clerked at, depending on who you talk to, they've clerked at all different levels of the court system, both state and federal. And it's very, very helpful, right? And so I like to think that they've kind of shared some of their knowledge with me that they learned from those clerkships. But if I hadn't known in law school that I was going to end up at IJ, I would have done a judicial clerkship. It just seems like an amazing thing that has benefited them for the rest of their careers.
And of course, clerkships on the state level are just as beneficial as clerkships on the federal level.
And we have attorneys who clerked at state Supreme Courts and state intermediate appellate courts. They're, they're all, like, I don't know a single attorney, and again, most of the IJ attorneys have done clerkships. I don't know a single one that has regretted ever doing a judicial clerkship.
That's great. Very wise. And Christine and Jimmy, do you guys have anything to add to that?
I mean, on that topic of clerkships, when I was coming out of law school, I think as a lot of young, young lawyers are, I was just focused on, well, I need to get the clerkship that's the most prestigious. And so, you know, I ended up getting an 11th Circuit clerkship, and I did that. But I sure do wish I'd clerked at the district court. It'd taken another year before I went into private practice. I've ended up hiring two district court clerks to straighten me out. So, yeah, that's, I mean, I think, you know, obviously clerkships are great resume lines, but I do think you should think about how it will help you in your career. I mean, the 11th Circuit clerkship was useful, but this happens to us constantly where somebody will be like, what's the rule for this? How do we deal with this particular appellate rule? Let's ask a clerk from that court. It happens with the Florida Supreme Court clerks. It happens with the 11th Circuit clerks. And they're like, we never dealt with that. The clerk's office dealt with that. I was like, then what use are you? But the district court clerks, they know the local rules.
I would just say, I would really encourage you to think about writing for fun. I think that that will, it's always good to practice writing, and there's a lot of great opportunities. I will plug the Fed Soc blog. That is a great spot. And what we really need, there's a dearth of, like, conservative voices participating in, like, the waves, the media waves, op-eds. And there's so many times when we fail to show up and say anything at all. And so just to have more people to be thinking through, how would I, what would I respond to this cultural issue, to this legal issue? Is there, is there a hole to that argument? Is there something even my side is not seeing the full picture of? And to really be thinking, engaging, and writing on that in your spare time will pay off dividends. You will never regret writing for fun, and it could turn into a job. You can become known, you know, several years down the line as an expert in that field if you find that you click with that area. And that is advice I've never heard before. I wish someone had told me years ago, even as a stay-at-home mom, like, with a law degree, who cares about these things? And I read voraciously. No one ever told me. People will publish you if you write your opinions of this. If you write, write a book review on this, on this book that just came out that, you know, by, you know, these legal scholars that nobody knows you even read. So that's what I would say.
Christine, how has your work in public interest changed your perspectives on the law, on life, as a person?
Yeah. So the world is not as dark and scary and harsh of a place as I thought, as I imagined even in law school. And it took trying the patience in my mind and a sort of thing. It took, it took putting yourself out there to realize that you, like, you can do things. You can, you can be friends with people with amazing experience. Yes, they want to be friends with you. Yes, they want to hear about your vacation two years ago in Utah. Like, they're, like, the people are so much nicer than you might think, who have done amazing things, who have accomplished amazing things. And that you can, like, go for that job, apply for that job, that you, you know, even your friends are like, oh, really? You're going to apply for that clerkship? And sometimes it really does work out. And so that's, that has, like, completely revolutionized my experience. I thought that the practice of law was very, and it is, exacting and harsh, but there's like so much, I mean, I know I'm like super philosophical this morning. Clearly, I got like three hours of sleep. I've drunk lots of coffee. But like, there's like more goodness possible than you think. And that is something that I really, like, took a chance on. And I've taken like 10 chances on. It didn't, it wasn't just the first chance. It was like you have to keep going and, like, sort of believe in what you're doing, because you have to do that to, like, get to the next step. And then you win cases that no one said you can win. And I can't say, like, I've been at First Liberty for two years, but there have been cases that my colleagues have won that, you know, people didn't expect to work out. Sometimes your opposing counsel, like, say the dumbest things and, like, concede things that is so fun. That stuff happens. So I would just say, like, go for it. Just go for it. And that has, yeah, that has been a perspective change for me that I did not realize in the beginning.
That's great. How about you, Jimmy? What do you, has your perspective changed?
Yeah. You know, working in government, my perspective has changed about government kind of in both ways. I mean, I think my assumption going in was that the bureaucracy, particularly the federal bureaucracy, but all bureaucracies are just so terrible. And working in government, I think I've seen that that's both true and not true, and that sometimes I've seen just bureaucratic nightmares that are far worse than I ever imagined. But it has also made me realize that these aren't bad people. The, you know, the bureaucracy is this institutional thing that people are just kind of thrown into, and a lot of what I hated most about government, I don't hold against the individual people for the most part. So that'd be one thing I've learned, just from, from working in government.
How about you, Christopher? Perspective changes, other than learning to run a business?
Well, mine's going to sound pessimistic after the last two, but...
Neither are we. Tell us what you have.
I almost always lose my cases.
He's not a warning person, we already determined that.
So I almost always lose, and lots of times I don't know that the people on the other side are good people.
We were on a panel two years ago, we had the same debate, so...
But I just think it's important to do what's right. I mean, just as Thomas is fond of saying, wrong is wrong, even if it's over a penny. And, you know, I think it's important to do the right thing, and I think a lot of times it's hard to recognize when you're at a conference like this, where it seems like there's thousands of people, you know, here to do the right thing. Sometimes it's up to you to do the right thing, and if you don't do it, no one else is going to. And so I would say that's, that's sort of one thing that I've, that I've seen, especially on our, when I say "our" side, I mean, you know, on the side I'm typically representing in, in the types of cases I am doing, you know, there's a long laundry list of all the most prestigious international law firms willing to represent the other side, pro bono, with 15 lawyers doing top-notch legal work, and there's nobody on this side. So, you know, what I would say is, it's, it's worth doing the right thing, and sometimes no one is going to do it if you don't.
Justin, other than eating at all the food trucks on the weekend, how has your perspective changed?
So two things. First, I want to point out that my wife and I have three kids, and my kids claim that I only represent people who give me free food. And I understand why they say that. They're wrong, but I, but I get it, right? My perspective has actually changed a lot, in some ways similar to what Jimmy said. One of the cool things about IJ is, even though I run our floor office, we all work together as one national firm, and I litigate across the entire country, and I also do some legislative work. So I'm interacting with, you know, state governments all across the US, red states, blue states. I interact with US congresspeople, federal agencies, and then also county governments, municipal governments, like, you name it. And one thing that strikes me is how different both elected officials and just other government officials are than what you see on TV, right? There tends to be, I think, the TV shows tend to fall into, like, two camps, right? On the one hand, you've got, like, this ridiculously idealized version of, like, the West Wing or something. Then on the other hand, you've got, like, the House of Cards, where, like, the government officials are these evil geniuses, and neither one is remotely true, right? I mean, honestly, and I know it's a comedy, but in my view, the most accurate show I've ever seen about government was Veep, the show on HBO. And it's because it shows them as human beings, right? Government officials are just flawed human beings, and I don't mean, and so am I, like, we're all flawed human beings, and government officials don't cease being human beings when they become government officials. And so, you know, sometimes we'll see people who are real bullies, although it's usually on the local level, where you'll see someone who gets power for the first time in their life, and it just totally goes to their head, and they're just, right, picking on our clients, and we call them out for being bullies. But a lot of times, like, in IJ, like, we'll talk, I was just talking to my colleagues the other day about the banality of evil, right? That you'll have, like, these government officials who didn't create this system, and kind of say, don't blame me, I didn't create this, you know, it's not my fault that I'm crushing your livelihood or destroying your life. And, I mean, on some level, I get Jimmy's point about not blaming them too much for a system they didn't create. On the other hand, I'm going to blame them a little bit, and I'm going to embarrass them, and maybe we can get some change, because I, even though they're, they're human beings, and I represent, I recognize that they're flawed, and they're sometimes usually trying to do the right thing, and they didn't create the system, like, there are problems with the system, and those need to change. But the fact that now I realize that it's not like some sort of either giant conspiracy on one hand, or these angels on the other hand, and that they're just people, I think that's a big reason why I've been able to get some, some really good laws passed, including food truck reform here in Florida.
Christopher, let's pivot, and I would just talk a little bit about cases. Christopher, you said that looking at cases coming up, or that have just been argued, you thought that the Students for Fair Admissions versus University of North Carolina and Harvard, which kind of have been a big one that everyone's talked about, is going to be a big case. What are your predictions? What's coming?
So I think the court's likely to focus on equal protection. There was some argument that they would focus on Title VI, and just say there's no strict scrutiny exception, if you will, to Title VI. I think they're probably just going to apply the equal protection line of precedence from parents involved in other cases, and say that a bare interest in diversity is not a sufficiently compelling interest. I would assume the chief justice will write it, though I wish it would be a Justice Thomas majority opinion. I'm guessing Justice Kavanaugh will concur.
Probably going out on a limb there.
Perhaps providing a couple of options for universities to continue to pursue various ways around the decision. I think, I think the response will be institutions of higher education will act as if the world is ending. I think they're already doing that to some extent. I think you will see mass and completely crazy changes in how admissions and financial aid and other decisions are made. I think you'll see a mass exodus toward any sort of standardized testing, or other ways that they try and assess students objectively, so that then, you know, having ceased all objective measurements, they won't get caught as easily when they are discriminated on the basis of race. And you'll probably see that trickle up to, you know, graduate programs, you already see it to some extent, law schools dropping LSATs, and then probably up to employers too, who, you know, being deprived of all objective measurements about students, now starting in first grade, have no idea what to do with applicants once they get to the workforce. So I think that the fallout will be interesting. It's encouraging to see places like Florida trying to push colleges to having, to having a solid merit-based system, because I think you're going to see a lot of colleges running away from that.
Now, moving on to a case that we don't all know about, the National Pork Producers Council versus Ross, which seems to be basically focused on small-scale facts, can California regulate how pigs sleep? And large-scale, can state impose regulations that affect another scale, this is dormant commerce clause issue, let's talk about that.
Sure.
Exciting topic this morning.
No, I think it is. And there are quite a few important cases on the docket, as there always are, but I would contend this might be the most important one for practical reasons. I mean, I think everyone here realizes that we live in a very politically polarized environment right now, and one of the things we're seeing that results from that is, you know, blue states trying to impact what happens in red states, and red states trying to impact what happens in blue states. And this question, this case is real about the question of whether one state government can regulate activities in a different state. And if the Supreme Court doesn't get it right, we're going to see huge problems, we're going to see this trend continue in a way that's going to be, cause all sorts of just huge problems for the country. And so, yeah, basically what's going on, Justice, as you mentioned, is California's regulating the pork industry, but it's a little bit more complicated than that, because only 1% of pork consumption in California is a result of activities in California. And so a bunch of, you know, well-meaning environmental rights groups and animal rights groups and things like that were able to take advantage of the fact that the pork industry has unusually little power in California to pass a regulation that they expressly said was designed to change the pork industry nationwide. They didn't even hide the fact that that's what this was about. And they bragged about how that these requirements for how, you know, pigs had to be treated, and how much space had to be given, were stronger than any state's requirements, and that because California is a pretty large percentage of the consumer population, the entire nation's pork industry would need to change to then meet California's new requirements. And that's a problem, right? I mean, I think everyone here should realize that federalism is important, and then one aspect of that is that, you know, one state's government can't regulate what happens in other states, even if, you know, you're doing business in that state. And that's where things get complicated. And to be fair, like, it was a complicated oral argument. If anyone listened to it or read the transcript, the justices seem to be really struggling across ideological divides. I mean, it's going to be really interesting to see how it comes out, but I don't want to, like, speak in hyperbole, but it's really important that California loses this one. And again, it's not a red state, blue state thing, it could work in both ways, but if the, if the court doesn't get this rule right, this question of what the rule is for when one state government can regulate activities in other states, this problem's going to get much worse.
Jimmy, you're watching a case out of Arizona. I don't think it's been argued yet, right? I think it's maybe this month, actually, on the calendar, February. But, you know, it's, can a, can a state intervene is kind of the underlying question in a district court's, after a district court's order. What are your thoughts on this? What do you, what do you see happening?
Yeah, I mean, kind of going back to what Chris was saying, you know, when I was working in the Trump administration, every expensive law firm in the universe was lining up to sue us for free, and that's just not true when you change to the other party for, you know, whatever reason. And so it really has been, I mean, obviously, these guys have things that they can do, but to a significant degree, it's really been up to the states to challenge, you know, unlawful executive action. But one of the things that we've seen is, you know, there's this law called the Administrative Procedure Act, that a lot of people are probably familiar with, and it's a real pain in the butt for federal bureaucrats to comply with it, because when you want to change policies, you also have to do things, like, go through this extensive notice and comment period, and do all these difficult things. So, you know, we've seen, particularly this administration, but they're not the first to do it, you know, people try to kind of get out of this. For example, one administration enacts a policy, you know, people on the sort of other side of the political divide sue them, administration changes, case is still pending, they've sued in a favorable venue, the court vacates the policy, and then the administration says, hmm, this would be a lot easier to just not appeal this than to do six months to a year of notice and comment. So we've seen that happen a lot, and I think, you know, there was a case last term where the court ultimately digged the case, but there's a four-justice concurrence where they're, like, cut that out, written by the chief, I think. Well, so they did it again with Title 42, and Arizona, on behalf of a bunch of states, sought to intervene. The Supreme Court has granted cert only on the intervention question, but they've stayed the order. So Title 42, this is the immigration policy at the border related to the public health authorities, is still in effect. Now, there's going to be an open question in that case whether the Supreme Court has to dig it again and write another stern concurrence, because they have rescinded the public health emergency, which may have the effect of rescinding Title 42 by operational flaw, but I guess we'll see. But the chief justice is going to write this opinion someday, and he's just going to get more angry if they keep playing whack-a-mole with him, in my opinion.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
Sure.
Since we have some law students in the audience, perhaps we should explain what "digged" means?
Oh, yeah, sorry, discharged as improvidently granted, is that?
Dismissed, yeah.
Dismissed. Sorry, now I'm confusing my Florida Supreme Court terminology, where they say they discharge jurisdiction. I just mean the court said, never mind, we're not taking cert in this case.
Right, even, they already took cert, and then they decided that was a mistake, and they're going to rescind the cert.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
No problem.
It's like you use these terms and you forget what they mean.
Christine, let's talk about Groff, which is a First Liberty Institute case. It was recently granted cert. What is that about, and what effect is that going to have on religious accommodations, religious liberty issues? What are your thoughts on that, and your predictions?
So we were super thrilled to see the court grant cert on one of our cases. We partner with the Independence Law Center, the Church State Council, and Baker Botts on this as well. And it's, it's a really, it's an unassuming case. This case is like Gerald Groff himself. He's a postal worker from Lancaster, Pennsylvania, in that general Amish country. He's a, he's a minority in a majority faith, because he's one of those Christians who has a very strong personal conviction he should not be working on Sundays. And for that reason, he chose the post office, because they didn't, no one worked on Sundays. But that changed a few years ago, when the Postal Service contracted with Amazon, they started doing Sunday deliveries. They initially accommodated him, and it's very, very easy to do so here. There was no undue hardship, as Title VII requires to refuse a religious accommodation on, you know, one of the largest employers in the United States, in the postal service, in this case. But instead, they, they just chose not to fire him, and they put him through the wringer multiple times. He voluntarily gave up the seniority he had at one location and tried to move to another, just basically to accommodate the postal service, and say, well, I'll move to this other location where it's easier to accommodate me, and I'll lose my, you know, all this that he had built up for, for scheduling, and, you know, all that sort of thing. And they still refused to accommodate him in the end. So this is just, you know, it's kind of a David and Goliath little case. It's a, it's a fascinating case, and so we're just really hoping, it really just kind of comes down to equal treatment. If you're familiar with Title VII accommodation law, if you are a person with a disability under the ADA, the court already recognizes that the words undue hardship in Title VII actually mean undue hardship, which, that's a heavy lift. But if you're a religious person seeking an accommodation, back in 1972 in TWA v. Hardison, there was dicta. This is not the holding, but this is, there was dicta in that case that has been used since that time to say, well, if you're a religious person, undue hardship means more than de minimis hardship. I don't, I mean, when I was a stay-at-home mom, I didn't understand that, right? Like, I hadn't been litigating important cases and come into Fedstock conferences, but that just, that just didn't, that doesn't sit right. And it isn't right. So we're seeking, we believe the court will hopefully reexamine what Hardison said, and just clarify for all of us that undue hardship for religious people means the same thing as it does for a person with a disability, or for any other accommodation request, since of course there are, you know, several protected classes in Title VII. So it's kind of an equality thing.
Great. Dicta is very dangerous, remember that. Do we have any questions? We have some, I can ask them more questions, but do we have any audience questions for any of the panelists? Seeing none. All right, oh, yes.
Hi, thank you all. Something that came up, and I think all of your statements, is the idea that part of public interest litigation is change. You want the law to change, you're trying to move it in a particular direction. So that also means, I think, that oftentimes you are running up against existing precedent. Groff's a great example, you want the court to reexamine something. Can you talk a little bit about how your, you know, the way you work on a case, the way you pursue strategic litigation positions is different when you're kind of running up against the law, or trying to move it in a particular direction that it maybe hasn't been moving previously, as opposed to, you know, the federal government oftentimes can be, like, litigating downhill. I consider this maybe litigating uphill.
Who wants to take?
I'd be happy to start. So I'm fortunate that, you know, I work at a place, it's not just a public interest law firm, but we proudly engage in strategic litigation, where we're trying to change the precedent. Like, we view, we could view Philburn as being wrongly decided, we view the Slaughterhouse cases as being wrongly decided, and we hope to get to a point someday where their original public meanings are vindicated. And we are also expressly based on the template created by the NAACP in the wake of Plessy v. Ferguson. I think sometimes people think that, you know, Brown v. Board happened just because culture changed, and one day the Supreme Court woke up and decided, oh, I guess separate but equal is not really the way to go. That's not how it worked. Instead, what happened was the NAACP strategically brought a series of incremental cases over several decades, showing the different unconstitutional results from separate but equal, and just chipped away at Plessy, and chipped away at Plessy, until in Brown, it finally came crumbling down. And that's really what you have to do, because despite what you might hear in the media, the Supreme Court does not like to overrule past precedent. Even when it does it, it usually, like, has signaled it for a long time, where it shouldn't be a big shock for people who are paying attention. It's almost like steering a cruise ship, right? You have to do it kind of very, very gradually. And so the NAACP model, I think, is the way to go, it's what IJ's done, and with quite a bit of success. And so you really, it's actually really cool, because you have to look at the big picture, you have to really immerse yourself in all the precedent, and not just what the precedent says, but the doctrine, so you can think about whether the precedent matches up with the doctrine, and how you can kind of shift it back into the right spot by bringing the right cases at the right time, right? Like, if the precedent's at A, and you wanted to get it to D, you can't bring the D case right now. You've got to bring B and then C in the right order, otherwise, if you bring the D case right now, you're going to create bad precedent. And so it's a really fun way to think about the law, and I think it's also a really useful way for society, because otherwise, without strategic litigation, there's kind of this one-way ratchet that happens, because judges are amazing, and I respect all judges, and I think it's a wonderful thing to do as a career, but they're only human, right? Every now and then, government slips one by the goalie, and the government grows in a way that it shouldn't have been allowed to. And the only way to ratchet that back, from a realist standpoint, is engage in the type of strategic litigation that I get to do, and some of the other people on this panel get to do. And it's a lot of fun to think about the law that way.
Does anybody else have a follow-up, Jimmy?
Yeah, so I've dealt with this mostly on the defensive side, and the conversations always seem to go like this, you know, we pass a law, somebody sues us, I explain to my client, or whatever policy person, there's this case that says you can't do that, and they say, that doesn't seem right, we should get somebody to overturn that. And I always have the same conversation, which is, we can do that, but we're not going to walk into court and just say that, because we have two levels before we get to the judges who can do that, and they almost never do it. So there's always a lot of, on the, on the government side of, well, actually, we might be able to say this, and we might be able to say that, and these people probably don't have standing, which, these guys hate when we do that. Which, these guys hate when we do that. But it's our job. But I could say I've probably had, I don't know, at least 10 cases where I've had those conversations. We've ended up making different arguments. We've often won, but I'm trying to think maybe one of them, we've gotten the precedent overturned. So you, I mean, they're picking cases. So they're picking cases with an eye towards overturning precedent. I don't get to pick who sues us. So you just have to preserve that argument and, you know, figure out if it's a good vehicle. But at the end of the day, you just have to figure out another way to defend what the government's doing, or in very rare cases, you know, maybe confess error. But that's pretty uncommon.
I want to take issue with an assumption behind your question, which is that like, you know, we, we plan. When we overturn precedent, we, we've been planning this for years, right? We had it all A through D laid out. And, I mean, we should do our homework and we should think rationally and, and, you know, bring our A game, of course. But of every A game we bring, maybe one or two go forward to the next to the B or the C. And so there's this aspect of, you know, just luck or providence. From, from the last Supreme Court term, the Coach Kennedy case, when that came in, and I was, I was, that was before my time, so this isn't me speaking for myself personally, but, you know, when that, when that case came in, it was supposed to be over in like two weeks, right? Coach comes in, he asks for help, they won't let me pray on the 40-yard line, it's getting a little sketchy at work, I'm a little nervous. "Oh, yeah, we'll write a letter for you. This will be over. This will be over in a week. And we'll work it out. We'll all sit down, we'll have a kumbaya meeting, and we'll make it work for you." Seven years later, we're at the United States Supreme Court, right? It just so happens, and you can't really predict, because it's not just our side bringing the right arguments and going for the right goals. You kind of need the other side to, to take a stand in ways that later the court says, "No, you shouldn't have done that." And that's, that's a song and dance that you don't control that half of it. I'm frequently surprised. I mentioned earlier, sometimes you get, you get responses to your complaints and you're like, "Interesting. That's not what I expected you to say at all. Okay, well, we'll see." Yeah, that's, so it's a, it's a dance where you just sort of, you see what happens in response, then you respond to it. And it's very difficult to predict which of your cases are going to go to the highest courts of power, which of your cases no one ever hears about, because you write one letter and it's over so quick. And, and they're happy. They, they get to go home, they have a peaceful life. So I, I don't know. I mean, you just show up. It's kind of like what Christopher said earlier, like, you know, you just sort of show up and you do the right thing. And you might lose. Sometimes you win. Sometimes you win big. Sometimes you win small. Sometimes you lose big or small.